We have no public hearings tonight, so if you wouldn't mind, would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a few additions to the agenda. Well, why don't we do public comment, then we'll do a Pledge of Allegiance after that, so people can get home. Who would like to speak first? Yes, I can't see who it is. Oh, hey.
I'm gonna read my comments if that's okay, because public speaking is not my long suit.
Could you identify yourself?
I will do that, yes. I'm Debbie Russo, and this is my mother Carmine. We're the Opener Suburbanization Italian Deli, in case you don't know, located at 164 Main Street in South Oakwood Terrace. In regard to the parking measures that are presently being considered, we would like to put forth the following proposal: That on both sides of Main Street, between Prospect Street and Mill Rock Road, either parking meters or two-hour limit signs be installed on all existing parking spots. This would result in approximately nineteen, I'm saying approximately, because with the snow in Wall, I couldn't count them all that accurately. It would result in approximately nineteen spaces for the midtown businesses specifically, and the village in general. Being that this is Main Street with B1 zoning, we do not see this as creating an unreasonable disturbance for the residents. It would create income for the village where none exists now. Each day we watch as people park in these free spaces and walk to campus or the bus station. The cars are then left in that spot for the entire day, and in some instances, all week long. Our aim is not to chase away anyone, students, tourists, visitors to the town, but rather to manage and ensure that parking is shared and available to everyone. There are no municipal parking lots in the town in all. Instituting this proposal would help this somewhat overlooked part of the village continue to grow into a vital part of the community. Thank you for your time and consideration, and a copy for all the members.
Thank you, Renee. Or Debbie, I'm sorry.
Debbie. Just don't forget the last.
That's what it was, Renee Russo.
Yeah, oh, don't I wish. Anyways, thanks again.
Anyone else? John?
I'm wondering if there'll be an opportunity to speak about the parking issue after the presentation.
Just during public comment, yeah, because we're just discussing it amongst ourselves at this point.
Okay, I just, and I want to say-
So now's the time.
Yeah. Like Mrs. Russo, I agree that we shouldn't leave some of the parking to two hours. I guess specifically for Church Street. Church Street is horrendous with people that come, walk their cars, and stay all day. And what I, what I witness is, it's the same cars every day in the same spots. When I'm looking for a spot to go for lunch or P&amp;G's, I can't find one. But that's, that's, that's one of my, my parking issues. My other is that I understand that there's some discussion about at post office parking lots, putting meters there. I don't know if it's true or not, if I want to hear the-
There are meters there now.
Is removing meters?
The question is, because the lease is up, John, and the price is increasing, should the village continue to lease that parking lot and keep the meters?
Okay, see, I had it backwards.
Yeah.
I thought that where there was no parking meters, you were gonna put parking meters, and then every time I went to the post office, I'd have to-
No.
Put a quarter in the thing or find-
There's only a certain amount, about half of the, of the post office parking lot is leased by the village.
I thought it was the other way around. I think the village leased it to them, I apologize. And the other thing is Tricor Avenue. Currently, there's no parking on the street, and I would like to see it remain that way. I don't think that anyone that parks there is gonna walk into town to shop at the local, local stores.
Thanks, Len.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Len and Terry and Dave?
Couple things. First, I would like to foremost thank the DDW for the wonderful job they've done with this snow. I understood on stage that somebody was complaining about the hours at night they were working. They were probably under their warm cuddly bed, and these guys were out beating, beating goats. Second thing, I came several, a while ago, and asked about considerations for monthly water meters. If somebody could get back to me with that, it would be appreciated. With regard to the parking on various streets, I think many of the residents actually do have places to park, because they know that if they don't park, when it snows, they will be towed. So some kind of solution has to be brought up and accommodated with. Unfortunately, you know, years and years ago, the father had the car, he went to work, the mother stayed home. Across the street from me, Dr. Flecker has a car, his wife has a car, and his daughter has a car. So my other neighbor to their left, they have two children, they're both young, I'm quite sure in time they will have cars. It is a problem when they, when they sectioned off these lots, they're fifty by a hundred and fifty, there just wasn't a lot of room to put cars. And there are many places within the village that have no parking at all. I will say that it's, it's, I remember when I was a member of the county planning board, the main business corps is allowed to cover ninety-five percent of its property. And as a result of that, there is no place unless they were to stack all the cars on top of each other. So not only do the residents have a problem with accommodating parking, and as Mr. Johnson said, if you go to P&amp;G's for lunch and you can't find a parking space, because the local lots are filled, we need more parking. I don't know whether a parking garage behind a hole will solve the problem, but we need to be able to bring people into this community also for their parking for attraction from local businesses. Okay?
Thanks, Len. Terry and David?
Excuse me, Terry Duggan. As you may know, we are engaged right now in an appeal before the ZDA regarding Two Mohawk Avenue. The booklet that Tim is giving you is a rather a summary of the issues involved. You can see it there, it's quite big, because there are a lot of code that has been broken at that site. And tucked in very back is a summary. And if you look at this summary, you'll notice that the, it just is a list by number, row number. There is more than, more than a full page of code that has been broken. Now, if you look at page twenty-five, the building inspector has attested to the developer's attorney that there were no violations on the site. I'm sorry, get back to the book, yeah, the attachment to the back.
The separate paper, Terry?
No, the book is divided into two sections.
Oh, I see, I see.
Photograph, number twenty-five. Okay, yeah, so the building inspector attested to his point was that there were no violations on that site. Whereas anybody driving by Two Mohawk Avenue and glancing up the driveway will immediately be hit by the sight of the dumpster. As you may know, section two twelve, twenty-two C requires that dumpsters be enclosed. This dumpster is obviously not. So right there, you have a code violation, when the building inspector is sure that there are none. And as you go through the book, there are way more. But that, that is why we're appealing it. These certificates of occupancy were issued in spite of the fact that there were multiple code violations on the site. And that itself is a violation of the village code. Village Code eighty-six dash eighteen A requires that if you first inspect it, make sure there are no violations, and then you can issue a certificate. So please read it, be familiar with it. If it might be helpful, we'd be glad to come in some night. Maybe you have Mark Tappy here, and we can discuss it as a group and later resolve some issues.
Thank you, Terry. Just so you and Tim and Theresa know, when we got this from the ZDA, we got a PDF of it. I did give it to the building department, and they're going through it for the boards, for a memo to the board about all the various code violations. So I'm aware of it, and we are looking at it in-house first before we talk about it here. Is this the same one you gave the ZDA?
There were issues that are beyond the purview of the ZDA, so they have an abridged copy. This is more full.
Okay, so I'll give them this one. Yeah, I'll give them this one then, okay. Thank you.
Housekeeping issue. Tim, is there a PDF of this?
Uh, no, we don't have any here.
Okay, we'll just send it through the scanner tomorrow.
Yeah, great. David, you're up next.
Do you want mine and make a copy?
No, I have, okay. I just wanted to address some of the things that came up at last board meeting. One was the two leased lots on Church Street and the post office. And I understand that partly the problem that you're discussing is do they raise enough money to pay for their own maintenance and lease costs? And I sent this to you by email, but I just pulled you from a study that talked about how to finance parking facilities in economic growth.
Could you stand that maybe, so John can hear you and-
Sure. And, but the gist of the study was that a single parking lot or a single parking building does not necessarily have to pay for itself, as long as it's contributing to the needs of the community, and that the full parking system, all the meters, all the lots, end up being hopefully priced, you know, cost neutral. In fact, the village is not supposed to be legally raising money or raising revenues through parking. It's, at least I found one quote that said it's only legal if it's not for revenue purposes and it's only for parking control and regulation. But the main issue is just that, I don't think it's, I think it's very short-sighted to think that each meter or each, each little lot has to pay for itself. And I think we talked last week about how much value there is in some of those small lots, because they're not near any other lots. The other thing was the, you talked about a experiment with two-hour and four-hour parking on six streets. I just want to point out that at the time, you didn't set any criteria for how you're gonna judge that experiment. I think it's, it's kind of a useless experiment unless you decide what you're trying to accomplish, what the problem is, and how you're gonna know whether this six-month experiment solves it. Especially, is it, is it gonna create parking problems somewhere else, because you're pushing people to other streets, or you're actually succeeding in getting them to park where we want them to park, which is at the college? So I'm not sure what that is, but I think it's kind of very important that before you do an experiment, you figure it out. And the third thing is, last week Jason said something that kind of bugged me. There is no room for more parking in the village without tearing down buildings. So I just wanted to point out a few things, because there are plenty of opportunities for parking. One is, there are lots and lots of private lots in the village, and many of them are bothering each other. There's actually a law in the village books that when two lots are adjoining, they have to be joined. And there are a lot of opportunities for those lots to become better lots, and perhaps the village leasing them. So I think there's actually quite a bit of land devoted to parking that's used very inefficiently, and I think that's a huge opportunity without having to do anything huge. And of course, there's the, the option of building a parking facility, which we talked about. And there are also a lot of meters that have been removed through the years that I think should be reviewed and looked at, and hopefully restored. Which kind of brings me to the last point, which is the two meters on the agenda tonight. I would strongly object to that, partly because I think one thing that you haven't talked about too much, that one of the purposes of on-street parking and metered parking is creating a pedestrian environment that's friendly and comfortable. And having a row of parked cars is the standard way of making sidewalks good for people. And once you remove those spots, as we saw, like in front of the Bistro, it used to be a very wonderful area, used to have a lot of people hanging out. It's very, almost one of the worst places downtown because you remove a little of the spots. So I think you should consider very carefully rebooting them, even if they have some benefit for traffic.
Thank you, Dave.
Jason, may, may I answer two things? Because I'm, I'm gonna ask, because we have a very busy agenda, and we spent a lot of time at last meeting, and we need to spend time on this topic, that it be the last item on the agenda for tonight. So I wanna move it, but I know you've been very busy all day. And so the experiment that we proposed, and it's too bad, but from advice of our council, it can't be an experiment. At least, he has not found anything that permits that without changing the entire code. And the two meters that are on the agenda recommended by the TIC have been made a part of the whole parking discussion, because it's a very complicated thing. And we're hoping to create more parking, as you know, from behind the pizza place, you know, where the driveway goes up. That is one of the things that we want to talk about, providing parking there, if we can achieve it, which will provide about twenty-nine more parking spaces in closing that off. So that's all a part of the big pot. But I do want to say that I really appreciate everybody coming and giving us their thoughts, because as David and I both know from this conversation many, many years ago, this is a community, and we need to look at the whole community and balance everybody's needs as best we can, so that everybody in the community, from a parking standpoint, at least feels they're winners. So I appreciate all input, and everybody has come, pros and cons. I don't know where we're gonna end up, somewhere, but thank you. Thank you, John.
Rich, and then John again. Rich, I'll tell you.
All right. I just see a thread with what everyone said. I mean, even to Two Mohawk, because one of the major issues there was inadequate number of parking spots for how many people were living there. And Lenny, you know, talking about residential areas having narrow driveways, and the Dean Tuffs, and the Russos, warning meters. I mean, this is part of our growing community, and the fact that we are seeing more commercial in midtown, you know, it's gonna happen, some of these houses are gonna turn, be demolished like Alfandre did a little further in the town itself. We're gonna see that, and I think metering, it just seems so unfair, not just to them, but to anyone in the future, to not have meters there. And the burden, the burdens are growing, and the answer partially is to, to meter Main Street further up. That's, it just seems, when you think about, you know, okay, it's, it's spreading. Well, when that spreads, this other infrastructure needs to spread as well. And Church Street, you know, the landlords have to start taking care of these issues, one way or another. Either having fewer apartments, or figuring out ways to lease space from other landlords that have excess space for parking. So, you know, the businesses, when they talked about, you know, going to P&amp;G's, maybe they didn't go to P&amp;G's because they couldn't find a space. And that's not good for them, but it's not good for the community either, to just let people leave, you know, it's unfriendly, it's inefficient, et cetera, et cetera. So coming up with solutions is good, and it just seems like it shouldn't. I have to get home soon, because my daughter's studying her mock trough. Meeting after meeting after meeting, these things just should be done, or at least a number of them. Like, like metering Main Street is not really, I don't think there are pros, like Sally says, you know, there are pros and there are cons, but I don't think there are. I think you'd be hard-pressed to pull somebody in to say, metering Main Street, I can't, you can't do that. Unless it's somebody, you know, who's very selfish, who has an apartment or something, and, you know, doesn't want to park where their landlord said they could park or something. That's it, but I just, the common thread, we do have divergent people here, you know? Not everyone's a business owner, some are landlords, some are, you know, residents, and some are businesses, but there, there's a common thread here.
Thanks, Rich. John?
I, I have to take offense being a landlord. I heard Dave and this gentleman say, what Dave says, we need to get the students off the street and parking on campus. Church Street, you, you said that landlords need to provide parking for their tenants. I'm a landlord on Church Street, and I have ample amount of parking for my tenants. The landlords that I know on Church Street have ample amount of parking. I think it's a disgrace that we're scapegoating the students. Now, I'm not saying that every student has a place to park, but the people that are parking and getting on the bus, they're not students. They're parking on Prospect, Grove, Oakwood, Mann, Mannon. And they're walking, I see them every morning, walking to the bus, so they're not students.
I wasn't scapegoating.
Well, okay, I apologize.
No back and forth, gentlemen, no back and forth, no worries.
But, you know, it's, it's not just, it's not just the students. It's, it's the guy that has to commute three hours to New York City to pay the taxes to live in this community. He's getting on a bus, and now we're gonna tell him, okay, you can't park between Main Street and John Street, but you know what, we're gonna push you down between John Street and Henry the Boys, and have you schlep over there with your coffee and your bagel in the morning to catch your bus. Now, I'm not saying that if I lived on that street, I would be happy with a commuter parking in front. I, I know I probably wouldn't, you know, I, you know, in front of your house, you get paranoid, you know? I see it with, with my rental properties. I see people from Drywood coming out and parking in front of my house, and I'm like, and I tell all my tenants, please, park in the back, don't park in, don't park on the street. The Church Street is so narrow that sometimes you drive down there, and two cars can't, can't pass each other at the same time. It, it happens, I know you guys know this, it's, you know, God forbid a fire truck has to come down here. But when I tell you, I'm sure there's a lot of students that are parking there, and they should be. Not all day, they, you know, they should park at their place. But it's not just students, it's, it's, it's everyone. It's people's employees. It's, 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 it's everyone. It's Dave, he parks his car there every day. If the landlords are required to have parking spots for their tenants, maybe the business people should also be required to have parking spots. Maybe they should, we should have a thing down by the sewer treatment plant, that parking lot. You buy a, a monthly pass, and, and all the employees park down there. You know, there, there's a problem, but, you know, people either were gonna say the residents aren't gonna be able to park on the street, so we're gonna say the residents can park there, but the students can't. I don't think that's fair. Maybe a two-hour, two-hour limit for everyone. Students, commuters, employees. You know, if we're gonna be fair about it, let's, let's be fair. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Don, throw us another handle.
Here in the corner, yeah. Uh, two quick things on parking. Sally, you mentioned the rent stolen up on the post office parking lot. And I recall a statement, I don't remember who made it, at last meeting, someone who had knowledge of the landlord, and said that the landlord would likely take the same rent or less rent. So I, I think you, you know, when, as you go into that discussion or think about that, you remember that comment, because, yeah, I don't know the situation, but someone who seemed to know it suggests that he might get a break on the rent.
That was Mr. Zerler, and he did not know, and it goes up, the rent goes up every year. Now, the idea of negotiating is a good one.
Yeah, that's not suggesting you negotiate, because if you're trying to take something away, you're very negotiable in a hurry. Uh, the other thing I, I wanna say, I wanna make sure it's taken as a positive proactive, not to make anyone defensive at all. I praised the fact that you were talking to the business community the past two meetings about the parking stuff. I don't know that it's, there's a, a standard operating procedure that that happens. I think there have been times where there have been discussions and changes in parking, where the business community hasn't been proactively invited to discuss changes. And I, there was a recommendation from the TIC about removing the space in front of rat the pasta, and also the space in front, in front of liquid. And I happen to use those spaces often, but I just wonder if there might be, if those businesses have been contacted, and if they know that, that these spaces, which have to be important to their businesses, are in discussion of being removed. So I know that you're opening up the parking code tonight with regards to handicap spots on Mill Rock and Church. And just in case, I just want to throw it out there. I wrote up a modification of the parking code for consideration, says when modifications to the Village of New Paul's Code Regarding Parking Spaces Located in the Downtown Business District are considered, it will be the policy of the Village of New Paul's to proactively seek input from businesses in the immediate area of those changes. Something just to put in there in your code, so that this is what you do, you know, by policy, when, when this issue comes up. The people who own businesses that are affected, it's, it's your policy to reach out. And you may, you are doing that in this case, so I can get it, wanting to be defensive or feel-
Would you like to add, this is item number twenty-three on the list.
Sure.
We should not be accepting and voting on any item at the same meeting.
Yeah, yeah, I agree, I agree.
Yeah, it can be either.
Before we get to, is there anyone who hasn't spoken yet who wants to, who has a comment? Should we start people who've spoken? All right, Len, please.
I must say that in the beginning, when they had the parking ride out by the thruway action, I figured nobody's ever gonna use that. I figured it's ridiculous. I'm gonna tell you, that place is full. Matter of fact, they even enlarged it. So what I would love to see the village board do, solicit whoever owns that parking area, make it bigger. Because if that's the case, then all of the people who take the buses to New York City will have ample parking. But I, I can't say for sure that it's a hundred percent full, but I would sure love to see that parking lot, another thirty spaces there, I don't know if there's room. I don't know who owns the land, I really don't know anything, but I will tell you that that parking lot is utilized quite a bit, seven days a week, as long as the buses are traveling, people are parking there. John?
Thanks, Len. David?
Just a quick one, just in response to some of the comments. I just want to say that it's, it's a wonderful thing that we have a village where we need parking for our employees, for our customers, for people who take the bus to New York. I mean, those are positives, we shouldn't be looking at as, why are those people parking on the streets? You know, these are the people that we're here to serve. And I think every suggestion here was kind of some kind of stopgap, meters, two hours, you know, whatever it is. The issue is we need more and much, much, much more parking. We need a parking garage, or we need a huge change in, in, in the land policies. But we can't, you can't just keep making do, because none, none of these ideas are gonna work. Anytime you move someone from one place, you're creating another problem. The issue is not enough parking spaces for the size of our village.
Thank you. Any other public comment on any topic, doesn't have to be just parking? All right, thank you all very much. With that, we'll move to approval of the agenda.
We have things to add.
Yeah, I believe we do. Well, we have a revised letter from Theresa Paul about the Regatta, but that's already on the agenda.
The discussion on the joint master plan that was gonna be on the agenda, remember the memo that you and I talked about, and I sent to the board? Do you want that in executive session or in public session?
I don't remember what Nicole says.
The idea of hiring.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Let's talk about that, because it involves some other personnel issues that are surrounded. Let's talk about that in executive session first, and then come out and talk about it in public session.
And I was going to add Dan Torres's request to the agenda, but he and I have talked, and I am going to do it as a part of announcements, if that's okay. but he and I have talked and I am going to do it as a part of announcements, if that's okay with you?
Sure.
And we, I had asked the Crisana with, uh, request for annexation be on tonight's agenda, but the town has asked for another extension until September. And our village attorney is asking to have time to review the files of written requests on this because there are time limitations when somebody asks for a process that it must be followed through. So that, could we have an update on the next agenda for that? Thank you, Kate.
And did we need a second? Well, I guess we'll get to that when we move it down to the agenda. Is there anything else to add to the agenda? Anyone have anything else? No? All right, then I'll move the approve the agendas.
Second, I'll move.
You moved.
Oh, second, all right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Could you, I know there's several, yeah, give me one second. Oh, actually, shoot it now, but I've already started. I know there's some of you here for parking. Is anyone else here for something specific on the agenda? Which one?
I think this.
Oh, plastic bag?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I had asked the clerk, that the discussion on parking, because it did become, and, and very validly so, we had to put a time limit on it. Since we have so many important things that must require action tonight, I would ask that items four and five, we move down to item 13 and 14. And then we can give ourselves as much time to talk about these things until people say they're tired and wanna go home.
I would rather keep them at the top of the agenda.
But then I'm gonna make it a formal motion. I wanna move the parking to the end of the agenda because people got upset at the last meeting that too much time was being spent on it at the expense of other items. And parking, as we know now, is a very important thing and we need to have full discussion of it. And if we're going to cut it off in, say, a half hour, then I would prefer we get through the agenda quickly and devote ourselves to parking at the end of the meeting where no one will feel pressured.
I'd prefer to have it first only because there's so many people here waiting to hear the conversation. So having them sit through the rest of the meeting.
Then we're not gonna limit it.
Well, we, we're halfway done anyway, yeah? We got through half of the list last meeting.
All right, as long as we understand that.
And if we want to, if we want to, we can always, you know, cut it off, finish the meeting and then come back to it later. So we have other options, but.
All right.
Um, let's, let's do that and, and the washable bags first.
Um, I, we haven't had announcements yet.
Yes, I'm sorry, Tom had one.
And I have two.
This is a set of three teeny announcements. Attorney David Merzig and I have been party to a number of discussions, including conference calls with DEP personnel, including their attorney, to draft an IGA for village board consideration at an upcoming meeting. I hope it will be by the next meeting. I have also been in contact with Jeff Logan, who is there, who is the town's liaison for the water projects. And our attorney has been in touch with their attorney about not an IGA, but the IMA between the town and the village. And then thirdly, DEP in the Village of New Pauls will negotiate a new agreement to bring up to date the 1928 agreement that has prevailed since that time.
Thank you, Tom. Sally, you had three?
Yes. One of the results of our meeting on parking was sort of the formation of a subcommittee to work on the signage, which is on the list of items. And we're gonna meet March 2nd at 5:00 in Billy's Hall. Okay? And I'm going to, for the sake of the committee, translate as best I can the original proposal that was done by the committee that met with Kurt Lavallo and get it out to everybody. And David also suggested that we invite some additional business people aside from Amy, Ariana, David and myself, and I will do so. And the second announcement is, because I think it will save us some time, is we had a letter suggesting that we expand the village voter registration, but we do not have village voter registration in the Village of New Pauls anymore. It was abolished in 1992. I think the confusion came up because somehow in 2007, the village had a local registration after it was abolished. And so it was re-abolished. And resulted, the village board at the Village of New Pauls that pursuant to New York State election law shall not have any village registration for village elections. And so the issue, I think Dan and I talked in the beginning. Um, I think the confusion probably was that in 2007, the left hand didn't know what the right hand was doing, but we do not have local village registration. And thank you, Dan.
Any other announcements?
I actually have a couple of things for Sally in terms of the TIC that have been discussed in the past. Have you, I've asked that-
Do you wanna talk about this when we get to the parking items?
We could.
What is the question?
There's, there's a couple of items that I would like to have brought forth to the TIC, which I know we've just discussed in the past and I've never heard a report back. But if Jason wants to.
Whatever you, just do that, just do that.
Okay.
Well, I'm not your TIC representative, I'm a member of that committee.
Right, right.
That's your liaison.
You're the official liaison, okay. I know that Sally goes to the meetings. The light at North Chestnut Street, I've discussed it a few times where the four-way, where you have, I would like to see it changed to a four-way crossing because the majority of the traffic there turns. And for pedestrians to be crossing while the majority of the traffic-
It is a four-way stop, yes.
It, no, it isn't.
On North Chestnut?
Yeah. North Chestnut and North Front?
Main and North Chestnut.
No, I'm talking about North Chestnut and North Front by Pegasus.
That's not a light, though.
It is.
It is a light.
Yeah.
It is a light.
I believe it was changed, all of them were changed recently.
That, it, it isn't a four-way. It's, you, um, when the light turns green to go down North Chestnut, the two crossing lights come on. But the majority of the traffic is either turning onto, to, toward Main Street or toward Kingston, basically.
Onto 32.
Right, when, when people are crossing at the same time. Um, and it just makes for a dangerous situation when most of the traffic is going to go onto North Chestnut for people who are crossing North Chestnut at the same time that the cars are going. Because that's when they're allowed to cross. Um, and I know several people who have come very close to getting hit, myself included. And a lot of it had to do also with the angle of the sunlight when a car is coming and turning toward Main Street and someone is trying to cross at that.
This is not really an announcement.
I'll send, I'll send it, why didn't you say?
I had an email with this guy. Okay, yes.
Yeah, that was.
At the next TIC meeting, you can bring it up. Because I know all of those, all of our, our lights that are four-way stops have been changed recently. And, and so I don't, this might have been changed, it doesn't mean it was a four-way, but all of them were changed.
Okay, good. So send me an email. Spoken about it so many times and I've had different people say they would take it.
This is honestly the first time I've-
All right, I think I, Sally had said she would bring it to the-
No, I took care of the striping that you asked for, but I did not know anything about it.
This was a part of it, okay, let's, let's stop. I'll send it to Ariana.
Yes.
Okay.
And I have just one announcement, just to save the date for the board, I think knows that it's not very public. There's been an ad hoc group of us meeting about the Walco River, including staffers from the Hudson River Rescue Program and Riverkeeper and then some scattering of other people from the community. So as a first project to build up more awareness of the river and try to get a permanent group of people together, we're having an event at SUNY sponsored by Creo and Mohan Consultations called The Future of the Walco River on April 23rd from 4 to 8. Um, so we're working out a whole program, there'll be speakers and breakout sessions and all this. So hopefully it will lead to something permanent to, a permanent presence on the lower part of the Walco that we live on. So there'll be more information coming, I know it's far away, but just, we're putting out the save the date announcement now. Uh, April 23rd, the day after Earth Day. And that's at, I don't know where yet, but that information will be coming. Any other announcements? All right, let's go into this. We have, um, let's talk about parking.
But aren't we doing the consent agenda?
Yeah, let's do it.
All right, I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
I'd like to amend it for the Hasbro baseball, you know?
That's what, no, go ahead.
All right. We are only being asked on the agenda to approve the use of village streets for the parade, but they also are asking and filled out an event application to use Hasbro Park and I will move to amend to approve that.
Thank you for the, any other comments? All right, so the motion on the floor, it's seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? And so now we'll skip down to number five. Or is number, uh?
Four and five.
Yeah.
Just go to four.
Yeah, let's go to five.
Are you doing four?
Five?
I thought we just moved through the memo we've started last time.
You wanna set a time limit?
Let's just start and see where we go.
Okay, on item number one, which we discussed rather lengthily, we know, as I told David earlier, that we are probably not going to be able to have an experimental period of six months to try the two-hour parking on Center Street, West Center Street, South Oakwood. So at some point, we are going to have to decide whether we wanna change the code for those streets, do the six-month experiment, make a decision. I agree with David that we will need very clearly defined parameters that say what is a success or not a success. And then we, if we find it is not successful, we will have to then change the codes back. Okay, so we can think on that one and you can decide later.
How far into this did we get at our last meeting?
We stopped at-
At 10, is it?
We stopped, we finished 10, 11 was the next item.
11 was the next one, didn't you?
Yeah. We stopped at signage and that's it. We have taken, that on the agenda is number 11, so we're good there. Okay, now, we are on the TIC's request to remove-
And this is also on the agenda.
We must, we can deal with it now. I would like to suggest the following. 12 and 13 go together when we, when Jason, Nancy and I had this discussion and we sort of put it into a larger arena because two years ago, Jason and I met with Bobby Downs, who proposed that the village take over once again the day parking lot, which adjoins our municipal lot, so it would not be difficult to organize this. And that we would like to take over that parking lot, close off that, I don't know whether to call it an alleyway or an entrance way to Main Street, which is very dangerous in the winter. So you would not use that as a driveway. And that we would create a nice walkway down from the parking right onto Main Street. That is still, that plan is still up in the air. Have you heard anything more, Jason, on it?
No, other than Trent playing phone tag with his attorney.
He was supposed to send us a contract.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll, I'll call him again.
Because if that could happen, then there could be a crosswalk, then there could be a crosswalk to where the curb cut is by Liquid, which is part of what we had talked about in the past when this idea first came up.
So that-
And, and then it actually, the spot in front of, in front of Rock to Pasta, part of, part of the problem is that that's a driveway.
That's right, and so that-
And so that spot won't be, it won't be an issue for visibility for cars coming in and out of there if cars park.
So I would like to suggest that we, and we put it in the proposals, that we know whether we're going to have a concrete, contract proposal by March 1st and then we can consider.
By Sunday?
Because as Ariana just pointed out, rightly so, the meter at Rock to Pasta is affected by, you know, even consideration of it, in my opinion, because it's not an issue if we can do what we would like to do in the bigger picture, which would obviously make much closer parking and a lot of parking spaces for downtown businesses. So I would like to suggest that we not do anything about 12 and 13, even in the way of discussion until we have the answer from Mr. Downs.
I have something to say on that. Um, my one concern, I, I like the idea of the village taking over that, the lot, expanding Plattehill. My concern would be the amount, the number of residents who rent apartments from Mr. Downs. Um, there are a number of apartments in 56th Main, which, um, obviously the building starts on Main Street, but it, it is a multi-level building, I believe it's three floors of apartments, which back up to that lot. And many of the residents park in that lot. That lot is most often full. During the winter, during winter break, it's empty. And I believe the reason for that is because a lot of the residents of that, of that apartment building and any other apartments he has in that area park in that lot. So I would want him to, um, to keep, um, ownership, maintenance of a number of those lots, of those parking spots as private parking for his tenants. And however he manages to keep track of that, but I just wouldn't want to see that many residents lose their parking spots and have to find parking someplace in the village when we don't have overnight parking that's adjacent to there, which would be convenient for them.
I don't disagree, but when it was proposed to Jason, to I, he had taken supposedly that into consideration and had it covered. That's all I can tell you. So, March 1st?
Well, that's on Saturday. That's Saturday.
March 1st.
March 1st? You wanna make it later?
To have a proposal in two days?
Why not? We've been waiting two years, sir.
Well, give me a week at least.
You wanna give it, you wanna make it March 9th or March 11th?
By our next meeting, I'll try to have something.
So if that's March 11th, you get to be the conveyor of the news.
I will, I will, don't worry. Also, to back up to number 12, just so the board knows, I did speak with Jed Sherman, who owns Liquid, about those two spots. I didn't have a chance to speak with, um, he owns Rock to Pasta, but Jed was supportive of removing the spot because he said he had seen so many accidents there over the 17 years, I think he's been in that location. Minor ones, mostly mirrors being knocked off each other or two trucks trying to get, you know, can't leave around each other. So Jed was supportive, I don't know how Rock to Pasta feels about it, but just wanted to let the board know about it.
Well, then I think we should, at, when we do the, setting the hearing for the handicap parking that we're gonna do, we probably should include the removal of that meter if that is the disposition of the board.
Well, let's, let's, you wanna bring that up when we come to the?
Well, we're combining the two. So what, what I'm suggesting is that we not do anything about Rock to Pasta till we have the March 11th. But Liquid is now on the table as to whether you wish to remove it or not.
What do the rest of you think?
I would not at all want to remove both. I, I'm not really against the one in front of Liquid, also because there is an issue with, with ice on that corner. And if that spot wasn't there, it would, it would make the snow and ice removal much easier. I don't feel- I don't feel that both should be taken out, also because of the reason why this was recommended. From what I understand, it was the issue of the width of, of both lanes of traffic. And if you're increasing, um, the, the passage on one side, I, I don't see it's necessary to increase it on both sides.
Well, as far as I'm concerned, Rock de Pasta is off the table for a very different reason.
Yes, yeah.
And so the only thing we're discussing is whether the board wishes to entertain the TIC's recommendation on the meter in front of Liquid. We know the pros, we know the cons.
I, I understand that Rock de Pasta, um, parking space is off the table temporarily. I would like to see it off the table altogether.
Tom, Ariana?
That wasn't what I asked. What do you wanna do about...
That's what I just said.
Oh.
That's my statement. That's how I...
You're supporting removing, you're supporting removing Liquid?
I'm certainly open to it for safety reasons in addition to the, uh, passage of vehicles, but I'm against, um, the Rock de Pasta spot.
Well, there's no point in, if the rest of the board doesn't agree, it doesn't even have to be discussed any further.
Right.
Well, Tom and Ariana, what do you think about this one?
I mean, I'd be in favor of removing the spot in front of Liquid.
You think? Yes? Okay, so that's one.
I'm okay with it. I don't have any passion about it.
I'm with Tom.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't say I have passion in it.
Okay.
I see the pros and cons.
That comes...
But one especially since you've spoken with Jed, that makes me feel...
So we know what we're doing later with that? Alright. There is a request that we're making to DOT for restriping of intersections of Route thirty-two and Main and Route two oh eight and Main and what is considered the thirty-two bypass. And that, the board will need to approve, that is a request from, um, Rebecca and the TIC. Um, and I believe it is being done as we speak.
Is that on here?
It's number fifteen, uh, number fourteen. So... That is already on the table.
So we already have the request there?
Yeah.
Yeah, we do.
Okay.
So that's just tick it off?
So fifteen?
We, fifteen, we have already talked about, we're gonna try this, uh, for those who don't have the list, um, we're going to try and develop a better parking lot at the garden, what's considered the Gardens for Nutrition. We're gonna hopefully stripe it, but the board will have to agree to do this. Um, we're gonna stripe it. Uh, Johanna Torres had come to us with a solar presentation and we're gonna try the experimental solar light that we have grant funding for, thanks to Bren White. And we're gonna put that solar light down there to see whether this is gonna work, because of course there is interest in doing more solar lighting through the village. And so this, number fifteen, is to do that lighting, which we've already agreed to, but we haven't agreed to the striping. And the signage, we're gonna come back to you with a sign package altogether, which will include a sign that is on both Chestnut Street and Main Street, directing you to additional municipal parking. So, fifteen, are we agreeing to develop?
We've already agreed about it. John, I wanted to just point out on your comment about the parking down there, we have been discussing that parking lot, obviously, and our holdoff right now in terms of like really promoting it as well as we can is the issue of lighting, just feeling that it's not as safe as it could be until we do put in lighting.
And we're working on a lighting too.
Right, we're working on that.
Can I say one thing before you stripe it? If you move the entrance to the right a little bit?
We can gain additional, yeah.
A little bit, thank you.
Yeah.
But, we have discussed this and agreed among ourselves, but we will need a motion to ask DPW to redevelop, stripe?
Does it need paving? I haven't been down there in a while.
Well, Rebecca said it did.
It, there's an area, it doesn't necessarily need paving. There's an area, um, to the back that is used mainly for depositing and storing, um, uh, concrete refus. There's piles of, of, um, soil, piles of gravel, things of that nature, which could get cleared up. And that whole section, they could add probably another ten, ten lot, um, parking spots in addition to the approximately thirty that are already there. And we did have them restrike last year as well. And what they can do in terms of what we request from them is to do, do additional measurements, not only for the lower end, but also, um, as John has suggested, um, move the entrance because there is a width of entrance next to the one, um, the vertical set of, of striped spots, approximately ten. Um, and there's enough width there to still have traffic in and out and increase in terms of...
My idea is this, for the March eleventh meeting, you develop a proposal on what you believe needs to be done or what you want information from DPW and then we can act on it?
I'll get in touch with Blue and have him know this suggestion.
And what will it cost, will it cost much or nothing?
No, it's not gonna cost much. It's just, it's additional strapping for the most part.
So we'll formally act on the development?
Yeah, absolutely.
We'll formally act on the development of that parking lot on March eleventh?
Yes.
Alright, good.
Building Department?
Yeah, it's six.
Sixteen.
Sixteen. And somehow, I mean, Holly did a very good job getting the letters out when we developed the long-term parking lot behind Village Hall, John. We have a long-term parking lot, which was intended for employees and tenants who live on Main Street. And it costs a hundred and twenty dollars a year for our parking permit, which is very cheap. It's a lot less than feeding a meter. However, it is not being used even by the people that requested that we developed this. So I would ask the Building Department perhaps to send out another letter to all of our businesses and owners of buildings on Main Street, encouraging them to use the long-term parking lot instead of using streets that are intended supposedly to encourage customers to park and shop. And we can have it both ways. So, I would like very much if the board agrees that we make an effort. And if that effort fails, then I think that we should inform SUNY New Paltz that that lot is available and can be rented by students.
So this is a marketing effort?
Oh, yeah.
I don't think it requires board action.
The opening it to SUNY students does.
That would, but we're not talking about doing that yet.
Right.
Now we're talking about better marketing.
I am talking about a twofold concept. And I want a motion tonight, and we'll put a deadline on when we need to do this.
Well, so, I want discussion.
Just now Rebecca also wanted to talk about the, the parking rate.
Yes.
But, but you agree that you were going to get people to use it?
Yes, I've spoken to a number of business owners who, um, felt that the, the rate was prohibitive. But with that, I would also like to suggest that we, um, back up a bit and look at, um, the term in terms of, in terms of length of time. And perhaps look at starting off with a quarterly, um, rate where it's reduced, but also, um, they're not required to pay an entire year upfront. Also, just so that the business owners can gauge how effective it is for them, not only as owners, but also for their employees, by not committing to a full year.
Well...
I thought we had that option.
We do. We do have that option, Rebecca.
Okay, well, this is where we need to get the, the word up.
No, people need to stop saying what they don't know and come up to the parking
Well, then let's, let's...
to the office and ascertain they can get six-month pro-rata permits. All of those things are available. They can also have the ability, because many of our businesses do not employ full-time people all the time. They can have two permits, say, interchanging...
That they're aware of.
Okay, so there are a lot of, a lot, there's a lot of flexibility.
Well, I think since that we wanna do more marketing anyway, all of this could be included.
That's the opportunity.
In a, in a follow-up letter.
Right, alright, so we're good on that, thank you, Bren.
Tom, is there anything else you wanna say?
I just wanted to make sure that we don't, uh, we don't couple the messaging to SUNY until we know whether the marketing is succeeding.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's it?
That's why it's worded the way it's worded. Put the loop schedule on the village website and encourage us to park and ride lot for both SUNY community students and employees of downtown businesses. This is Rebecca's idea, it came up at a parking meeting. And I think the loop bus schedule needs to be up on the website. And, um, the community informed, the park and ride is in fact, and the buses run, you knew Rebecca, they run, what, every half hour?
They run, uh, every half hour for a portion of the morning, every hour throughout the day with several half-hour increments as well.
Is, is this again not something that we can just do?
Yes.
Nike says, just do?
Absolutely, yes.
Well, um, that would be nice.
Katie could post it as well as put a link to, um, the UCAT system where people can look at all of the, the different, um, bus routes, which many go from New Paltz to Newburgh, Kingston, the mall area, Plattekill, not Plattekill, um, Wallkill area. Also, there is a office on campus that sends out courtesy messages, messages to students. I don't remember the person's name right off the top of my head, but I can send a message to them.
Yeah, if you wanna do that or ask the clerk to do that. Um, does the board support the idea of asking the clerk to create a meeting with Trailways and the Transportation Implementation Committee and the Village Board, um, to discuss Trailways' willingness to stop and pick up passengers at Park and Ride on Route thirty-two?
This was done not that long ago with the TIC.
Yeah.
I've done it, I've done it too.
Yeah, and, and they continue to reviews. I'm not saying we shouldn't try again, but, uh...
No, I'm not talking about just TIC. There is a whole...
No, the TIC and representatives of Trailways.
I know, I know. But now I wanna include the Village Board because I believe that all of the things that came up tonight, Prospect Street Parking, do we wanna discourage people? The fact that Park and Ride out at the thruway is so full. I think that it is very important that Trailways understand that it would be, they, they pull into Rosendale, Rosendale is not anywhere near the devout block that we have at Park and Ride. So I would like to suggest we can just do it as a letter. If you would prefer, just a letter to Trailways, I would draft it for Jason's signature and just say, "Look, we would really want you to stop that."
The, the reasoning is, um, is in terms of like the width of the entrance and exit and the turning radius. It has, has to do with the safety.
Right.
Uh, I, I have, there's a couple of things on that. Um, I go that way every single day for work. And, um, I, I cannot possibly see an issue with the side where the Park and Ride is. There's certainly plenty of area for them to pull over. There's also a bus, bus shelter right there. And with, with that being the Park and Ride, with so many people who use Trailways being city commuters, it makes sense for them to stop there because from there, the next stop that they make is at the bus station, and then the next, next stop from there is at the next Park and Ride. So I don't see it would, it, it being prohibitive then to stop by the Park and Ride. I don't see it necessary for them to, um, stop across the street, you know, necessarily right outside of Stewart's or what have you, but someplace along that, um, road where it's easily, you know, accessible. Yes, absolutely.
Would you prefer a meeting or a letter? Do you wanna begin with a letter?
I would prefer a meeting, I'd like to see it happen.
Yeah, I think, I think if we wanna do it, we should have them maybe at one of our meetings.
I could, I could see the spot outside of Stewart's being dangerous, but, um, a little bit further up, up the road before there, I don't see that being a problem.
The area right outside of Stewart's is dangerous.
Yes.
Because, uh, the UCAT pulls over there now and you cannot see oncoming traffic when you're trying to exit from Stewart's.
Right. But if Trailways was willing to pull into the lot, it wouldn't be an issue at all.
If there's a way for them to do that.
There is.
And if they're willing for them.
So we're gonna send, we're gonna have a meeting with, request meeting with Trailways and TIC?
We hope so.
Alright.
We hope.
But Katie is gonna see what is available and she will be in touch with GIC, Trailways, and then us to find a mutual time.
Alright, number nine, we got three more to go.
Nineteen is, uh, no, because we have to go back and then, and do something else. Um, nineteen is just a code change and I will draft it if you want. We have had a lot of complaints. People are happy that we are now bagging meters. We haven't gotten our thank you notes, but, for the holiday. But, there are some people that feel that the meters on Plattekill Avenue, and so I would just suggest that we bag all meters in New Paltz for the holidays and be done with it, so we're not making people unhappy.
Including Hasbrook Park?
Hmm?
Including Hasbrook Park?
Why not? Supposedly people park to walk to businesses.
What are, what are...
People, you think people park over on Tri-Cor by Hasbrook to go downtown?
I have no comment, I'm just repeating what I was saying.
The only...
I just...
I would just say all businesses, all business streets, or any street that has businesses, we already do North Chestnut, we do North Front, we do church, and we do Main Street. But I believe Upper Main Street is not bagged and Plattekill Avenue is not bagged and people are unhappy. That is the pleasure, oh, and we, we do, oh, wait, there's a few meters there. What is the pleasure? Bag it?
Yeah.
Alright.
I just, I, well, I just wanna say one thing, I, I'm not really passionate about it, but, um... And I have no problem making people happy, giving away some free parking for the holidays. But, I have to bring up the fact that we have all of these parking policies that are meant to increase turnover and, and keep people from parking for three, four days in one spot. And during the holidays, which I, I don't know, are the holidays one of the busiest seasons?
It's the most important time to get the meters working.
Well, that's, I know we have other high points of tourism and such, but the holidays are a big retail area everywhere. So we're, we're actually going the exact opposite of our, our policies in one of the most crowded parking times of the year, so...
It's anti-business to put bags open.
You think so?
I think so, but...
You think it's what?
Anti-business to have bags open.
I think your colleagues will maybe string you up for that statement.
I agree, they probably will, but the problem is that all store's have apartments above them. Those people in those apartments wanna park all of them.
So, I just wanna, I had, I had to put that out there, I'm not...
It's here.
It's not a...
It was a request from the Downtown Business Association, when it existed, for real, that we do the bagging. And I happen to believe that, and it was because those merchants believed that it would encourage more town, downtown shopping in their shops. I am not a merchant, I'm not gonna pretend I know. But I do think if we're talking about trying to do things in the best interest of the larger number of people, we should bag it all. That's my opinion.
I think if we do bag it, I have no problem with that. Uh, though I would, Katie, are we looking into cloth bags for next year? Do I remember, I had a conversation with you about that. Maybe it was Heather, it must have been Heather.
Yeah, I think, Don, we talked about that one night.
No, 'cause just after we...
And Blue was going...
We put a plastic bags in all the meters.
Blue was going to be asked to get, and maybe even already is getting, canvas bags to cover the meters for the holidays.
Okay.
That came up in a discussion early on.
Washable.
Hmm?
Washable.
Oh, oh, washable!
I, I wanna understand, are you, when you say Hasbrook, are you alluding to the...
No, I was just...
Oh, okay, so you're not alluding there to the...
I'm just saying, oh, oh...
Like in front of Denver, all?
Plattekill. Plattekill.
Cause that's the only business there, is Vandenberg Hall.
It's not a business.
Correct.
I, I.
Boomtown!
I know, I was being smart. Do we agree? We are going, we have a.
Wait, hold on Sally, Rebecca was, was trying to interject at one point as well.
She, she was laughing, I don't know what she wants to say.
Okay, I, it, obviously, it's a bit of a bigger discussion than the sentence on the piece of paper, um, I like what everyone has said, and I agree with, um, Jason and David, um, in terms of the time limits, um, I liked for us, or any of us who care to, to take a look at other areas of the Village that have the parking meters and think about the consequences, um, before we go directly into going ahead and, and.
Rebecca, we are only proposing, and it has been proposed, I don't care what we do, by some businesses that are not bagged now by code, and is in our code that we will bag Main Street, Front Street, Chestnut Street, Church Street. Those will be bagged for the holidays from December eleventh through the twenty-fifth, I think, don't hold me with the date, but I think that's what it says. The only question is, do we wish to extend that courtesy to businesses that are on streets other than the ones so naked?
I understand that, I completely understand that, that was your first statement when we started on this. My point is, I'd like to put that on hold, it's not an emergency, there's other items on the, the agenda that we should, um, move forward on. I'd like to think a little more about that item.
Alright, I think.
Where it's, we have a few months away from December before we have.
I think some of this, we maybe ought to handle a different way, and that is, on the concerns that are the business community's concerns, perhaps we ought to send a questionnaire out to them, so that one person, one business, okay, is, is making, has one philosophy, and we'll just go by the majority rule.
We could send something out along with.
Okay.
The, um, information on the Plattekill Lot.
What, the Plattekill Lot, what about it?
The, the building department, we.
Building, behind the corner?
Yes.
You're talking about the municipal?
She's talking about the Longform parking behind.
Yeah, what about it?
Yes.
When we sent, she's saying when we send out that letter, we can do what you're suggesting.
Yeah, no, of course, if we agree, then we'll just send out the letter and ask people.
What their opinion is.
To respond. Or maybe Katie, maybe we could figure out a way to put a survey on the website, and people wouldn't have to write letters back and forth, they could just assert their opinion.
Do I have the survey, and I'll happily put it on the website.
Alright, let's talk about that.
Yep.
Jason, who's at twenty-two?
At one.
Rebecca's proposal to that parking on Church Street.
Okay, thank you, David. So now we have three more.
At twen, we're twenty.
Yep.
Um, there is a thought by a number of people that we have a problem, where lookout connects with South Oakwood, especially when the alternate side parking is on the west side, that perhaps we need to set that back further, that, that where the last car is allowed to park on the north side of the west side, that they're too close to the intersection, and it's very hard because it's a grade, it's a funny angle, and you can't see clearly to turn left at that intersection, so there is a, I happen to agree with that, I, you know, hadn't thought about it until we were requested.
I, I have thought about it, and I agree with it also, but I think a hundred feet is excessive, I don't think it needs to be.
Well, no, or whatever Blue recommends, that's what it says.
Yeah, I understand, but a hun, I would just suggest that you, if you gain two or three car lengths, then you will be able to see, uh, unless the mail truck or somebody else parks on that corner of the full side.
No, no, it's fifty now, I think we don't realize how.
Oh, I thought you were saying a hundred feet more, I'm sorry, my mistake.
Okay, from the corner.
So you're talking about fifty feet farther than the.
Or whatever Blue recommends.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
Alright, so, that's a yes, everybody?
I'll support that, yeah.
Yeah, and it's, I think, I see Tom's confusion, it should, it should have said to corner, um, back to a hundred feet?
Hmm?
Back to a hundred feet?
No.
Back, back a hundred feet, sounds as if you're, you're going back another hundred feet.
We're gonna have Blue make the recommendation.
Yes, I know, I'm saying, but I understand where Tom was confused.
Alright, number twenty-one, we don't need to worry about at the moment, because that is based on a much broader area than right now we have. But we had the two-hour residential parking, the parking officer, for which we bought the cart last year, in part for him/her to use, but if we haven't made our decisions on the two-hour parking in residential areas, I, twenty-one can wait until we do that. Now, back to the question of the parking in, the extra parking meters that we will gain if the board supports the removal of the parking meters in front of, um, Saint Joseph's, the, number seven. Go to number seven. Okay. And we are proposing to remove the meters on Elving Avenue from the corner of Mohawk Avenue, north to Hasbrook, and remove the meters on the south side of Hasbrook to Tri-Cor. We will make these spaces two-hour parking, you know, with signs, that will free up approximately, I believe, twenty meters, which we could then use to solve some of Main, Upper Main Street's problems. Don, all say yes at once?
It will really solve Upper Main Street's problems?
Well, well, what, it would free up meters to be moved onto Main Street.
Oh, okay.
You would have the meters to reuse.
That's what we discussed the last time. I'm sorry, the, the way you said it, just, it's, it sounded to me like the people who needed parking on Upper Main Street would go over to Hasbrook and park.
No! So, do you like the idea? It solves a lot of problems, because one of the problems that we are facing, and as I said last time, volunteers who are willing to coach our children in Little League foot, whatever, Pop Warner, um, and soccer, and all of those teams that use Hasbrook Park often are ticketed, and that's not very fair, considering they're doing volunteer service. And I just think that would resolve that issue for a lot of people, and for parents who are coming to see their children play. We're not taking all the meters out, but we're providing enough space that coaches and parents could park and watch their children. So.
I have no problem with this one.
Okay, anybody have a problem? I will prepare the.
Well, I thought, uh, about this, and I thought, wouldn't it, I mean, instead of going through all the trouble to remove meters, putting them, taking them from one place, putting them in some other place, why wouldn't we just, if, if the issue is really the volunteer coaches, uh, then why not just give the coaches a, you know, some kind of a ticket or pass, and let them, let them park where, you know, whenever they, they need to? You're not going through then any difficulty, uh, in removing spaces.
When we were first on the board, Jason and myself and Ariana, this issue came up, and how you get them, the passes, the permits to them, and it became a very, very complicated and absurd thing. We need the meters on Main Street, meters cost five hundred dollars apiece, so this would be a good reuse, it would solve the problem, it would give us the meters we need.
Well, I'm certainly not willing to, uh, struggle over this.
Oh, good, okay, so we're done struggling for tonight?
So you're, you're gonna draft up something for us to look at on that one, Sally?
Hmm?
I, 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 actually, I have a question, and it related to this, how long do these games last? If it's a two-hour parking, women, are they gonna have to go and move their cars during a game?
I don't think most, I mean, I, I can't speak now to Rebecca, when my girls were little and played softball in that one, the games lasted no more than an hour. But, you know, the rules and games all change, and what do I know now?
Anyone have kids who are in any of the local sports?
Hmm?
How long, Tim, are your kids, are your kids doing sports in the park?
Yeah, most games last an hour, but at, at least an hour, and then, um, some individuals might stay there for longer than an hour.
But two hours would cover them.
I think you have a, I think you have a mixed bag, you definitely have some people who will be there, the organizers, people with more than one kid on different teams, you're gonna have some people there for an hour, some people there for three hours.
Well, I think we ought to try it. And if the three-hour people wanna park, if the meter's in front of Vandenberg, that's fine. But I think it's worth a shot to try it.
So you're, you'll have something for our next meeting?
I will have something for the next meeting, which will, eh, eh, there will actually be a code change, which will remove meters, put meters on Main Street, and you can decide on how long you want the meters to be. I think we're done with this for tonight, it's certainly done.
There was one more agenda.
Huh?
Was that one more agenda, Rebecca?
What was it, there was a twenty-second item?
Yes.
Parking on Church Street.
Right, um.
Well, that is not, that's actually on the list.
Uh, I, I don't know, this was something that disabled, no. It's not covered by number three?
Let Rebecca finish her sentence.
Sorry, okay, or, or, or else David could repeat it, no, there's a, um, the bottom of the, of a driveway on Church Street, if you're, if you're on, standing on Church Street, facing the, um, library parking lot, you might remember this now, Sally, there's two driveways, and then there's, um, the bottom of the one lot, and it, and it's vacant up to the hill, where there are buildings at the top of the, that lot, which you can barely see. Um, on our Church Street walk, um, several people commented on the state of that area of property, which, um, is full of rubbish, um, they've been fined, it doesn't get cleaned, there are, you'll see, um, things like broken TVs or what have you sitting there, uh, next to the driveway. And my thought in terms of that, um, area was to speak with the property owner, and I know someone else had a comment about the property owner, um, having moved or something, but to speak with that property owner, um, to see if the Village can take over the flatter portion of, of that, um, area, um, and add in lighting, which would add to the safety of that area, because it, it is dark, that's one of the problem areas on Church Street with lighting, um, so it would increase the safety, it would increase parking, it would increase, um, the potential for parking revenue for the Village if we were to take that piece of property.
And as I suggested to you, you might wanna get written correspondence with the owner.
Yes.
And that is the first order of business, but it seems to me, when we were doing the library parking lot, we investigated.
You weren't successful.
Acquiring that, and it was not for sale. Since that time, the owner of that property has moved out of New Paltz, still owns the property, but I'm sure that the tax records will show you the address.
Um, Brandon, would you, before you leave, be able to help us with that?
Yeah.
I know you'd know exactly which lot it is, so, yeah, great, okay.
Great, alright, anything else on number five on the agenda? Alright.
I hope we're done.
Let's go.
We may be done.
Back to number, uh, the second resolution under resolutions. Wash, reusable bags.
I will move the resolution.
I'll second.
Uh, see, it's on the table.
Right, that's what I was gonna say, there was a new resolution that's.
There is a new resolution.
Is that the one you've moved, Sally's the one?
Yes, I am moving the one that Don and Katie rendered with the appropriate language needed to authorize the purchase of the bags that the EPC has asked for. And it is a resolution, so it's by individual vote.
So it's been moved in second of discussion?
I, I have one thing, um, I sent an email out, and, uh, I guess Sally spoke to some people about, um, signage for the businesses, um, a couple merchants have mentioned to me, uh, and all of them were supportive merchants, but they said that it'd be great if we could have something that they could put by the register, maybe just letting everybody know that this is coming, and reminding people of their, their reusable bags, um, so I didn't know if we wanted to include any money for that.
I would like.
Or if that's something you have funding for, or something we could maybe even print in-house, or what?
Well, I suspect, yeah.
It doesn't need to be a complicated.
We're gonna get close to, for what the EPC is requesting, and the amount that they're requesting, I don't want to lock that idea into this idea, okay? And I, so I, I am in favor of what you're suggesting, let's do it as a separate motion.
Okay.
Any other discussion on this resolution?
Nope.
So, Ashley?
I'm sorry?
Go and call.
Ah, go ahead, thank you.
West?
Aye.
Botteler?
Aye.
Taco?
Aye.
Rhodes? Basco?
Yeah, very good, and we don't even each get one free.
That's a good shoot.
Now, I would like to move that, the, we discussed this for a while ago with Julie Robbins, and nothing ever came of it, because she's had a lot of family problems, but I'd like to move what Ariana is suggesting, that we allow the EPC, and maybe in discussion with some business owners, decides, we had talked about decals.
Right, right.
That you could put in the window saying, I support, or I'm an anti-plastic bag person, or whatever, and so I'll move that, um, that we expend, because I think I'm right on this figure, that we authorize the purchase of decals for eight-by-ten posters, or whatever he, uh, John and Don think, and to not exceed more than two hundred dollars.
That's fine.
To provide posters for merchants.
To provide some form of signage.
Yeah.
Some, some form of signage.
Yeah.
So if the merchants. Perhaps the EPC can come up with, um, what they feel would be an appropriate sign, and it should also include a summary of the Village law, just to make it easier for the merchants to, um, explain why they are not giving you a plastic bag.
Well, I think we're talking about two things here.
Yes, we are.
One, one is a noti, notification, something that is, that what, what ad was approached about, it was something that included the date of it going into effect, and more like a notice that this is coming down the line. The window decal is something that I think is more about the participation factor, and just kind of promoting it, advertising it more long-term, where it wouldn't necessarily have the date of, 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 of impact.
And what I am holding is the second part of what Ariana, talking, and Katie also supported the idea that we provide our business owners with, I don't care, a charity, a some sort of, hey, look what we're trying to do.
Right.
And the law, as far as I'm concerned, if we want, if, if we wanna send down a written notice, or put it in the water bill, we're putting a lot in the water bill, to our property owners, plastic bag law goes into effect April first, I don't care, but my motion is for the, hey, we're all in this together, sort of notice.
Like we're, we're a plastic bag free community.
Yeah. Or, or whatever, something that's uplifting.
Okay, so do we have a second for this motion that's on the floor?
No.
I think.
I think I said.
I remember that.
Yeah, I did.
Okay.
You said.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Hey, just to warm just to know about this, uh, subject, something's coming up, but I'd, uh, I think the next agenda, uh, I'll be communicating with the business community by email tomorrow, let them know the wonderful lead on. Uh, we, we must have a lot of research in terms of making bulk paper and reusable bags available to the business community if they want to participate in that plan. Um, there might be some discussion on whether the village would be willing to have pallets of bags stored on your property. I wanna give that, that's, that might be complicated. Who administers it, you know, where does it go, who doubles out the bags? So I wanna ask you, I think by talking about that text, uh, next meeting and in the interim, I'll get in touch and communicate with the business community and see what sort of interest there may or may not be.
How many pallets? Are we looking at one four-by-four pallet?
I'm thinking three pallets.
Three pallets?
Sorry, guys.
Do you want to...
I don't know if I have the space.
Well, ask the business community to see if they're interested in that before we...
Yeah, please, that would be easiest.
And the other thing is that blue would be the one for Don to check with. And then when you make your proposal on your model for distribution that you talked about, uh, you could include the pallet storage there at blue as the space.
Okay. Blue's all that needs.
We should. The board used it years and years ago. All right, well, we usually take a break about nine. So why don't, uh, are you guys all, is anyone else here for something on the agenda? What are you, what are you here for, Donna?
I'm here for number eleven.
Oh, the regatta?
Okay, then, then let's do the regatta, then we'll take our recess. We hope playing swings.
Are you doing regatta?
Yeah, we'll do the regatta. There's a revised letter on the table, uh, from Theresa Paul.
I'm going to move the, the street usage for the regatta parade. Um, and the insurance, it must be noted, the insurance is not the village's responsibility, but the town, since we have a whole change since last year of the way parades are handled. So that, and I will move that we transfer the two-hundred and whatever dollars...
Two-hundred and sixty-eight dollars and forty cents.
That we had closed out the regatta fund, put that money in celebration after the, the original regatta committee sent the check back to us. So I move that we take that sum of money and take it out of celebrations and cut a check to the new regatta committee.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Let's do the...
Uh, Katie has a question.
Didn't, uh, in the December thirtieth, two thousand fourteen meeting, didn't you, we, we allocate that money to be used for the Christmas tree bonfire?
No, there was other money in celebrations that was used for that.
No, that came out of hundred and twenty-fifth, Katie, it's a different issue.
That's right.
All right, so the, the motion on the floor is, let's do it one piece at a time, Sally.
Okay, what do you want to do?
Is, the motion on the floor is to turn over the balance of the regatta account to the new regatta committee. And I seconded, is there any discussion?
And that's a transfer out of celebrations to reallocate it to the regatta committee.
Let me, I'm trying to summarize, so we don't have to go through everything every time. So is there any discussion on that facet to this?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now it's the, we're going to approve...
And you wanted, you had a second part to your motion, what was the other?
No, we're going to approve the use of the streets for the regatta event. The village does not carry the insurance.
Well, let's just do it one, one at a time.
No, no, it's part pending...
I'm gonna make a motion that we do do insurance.
I'm, well then, I've already made my motion, so vote no. You wanna just do use?
I'd rather do it in pieces, so we can, we can, we avoid situations like this, if that's all right.
You can do it, but generally it is the town for regatta.
Okay, your, your motion is on the floor, is there a second to Sally's motion?
Second.
What is it?
Any discussion?
Yeah, I wanna know more.
It's to approve the use of the parade, approve the parade. And we don't, and they have asked for the village to, they have asked to use the villagers' event insurance policy for the regatta. Sally specifically said no.
It can.
We can, if we choose to. Sad, but Sally's motion says we will not provide the insurance, but allow the parade.
Okay, let me just explain this more carefully. We have had a change in policies. The town now is in charge of all parades. And any parade that wants to occur in the village goes to the town. The town only asks for permission to use our streets. The insurance for parade is carried by the town if they so choose. That's all I'm trying to say. We do not carry insurance for parades anymore.
We do not, we have no insurance for parades.
We can, we can, we can at any time we choose. Just like any group, any group, we could cover any group to have, say, an event in the park, if you need event insurance.
You could waive board meetings too and not have them. But my point is, the process, which I think other board members are less clear on, is that now the town of New Pauls is in charge of approving or not approving parades.
Correct.
And that includes insurance. Insurance, the only thing the village is involved in with parades is saying to the town, "Our calendar is free, the parade may go on." The town collects two-hundred and fifty dollars per parade for our DPW putting out the, whatever we call those things.
Events.
And that's, so my motion is to follow the process. And that is, we will approve the street usage. If there is an insurance issue and you think we should bend the rules, that's fine. But I think we ought to follow the process and the insurance.
It's unfair to call it bending the rules, because we are the ones who made the rule. And if this is the process we've been following, that's fine. But that doesn't mean we can't do something, like when we have a community event who needs insurance.
It's not an event, it's a parade.
Sally, let me finish, please, you've had plenty of time to express your, your, your point of view. I'm simply saying that I believe that we should cover the insurance, it doesn't cost us much, that's all.
Let me, let me ask whether my reading of this sentence, uh, is accurate. The, uh, regatta committee is saying that if they, the regatta committee, are covered under our insurance, then the New Pauls Community Foundation will act as a conduit for their...
Two different things.
They said if we are covered under your insurance, they should be able to do this, and they will vote on it. The implication is if they are not covered by our insurance, they may, if, if, the deduction is not, they will not do it, they may not do it.
There is room for clarification on that, because the town insurance would permit them to go to the foundation. The, the "R" and the "U" and is unclear.
The town doesn't usually insure anything, uh, they get private insurance usually for event insurance policies.
Maybe we vote on my motion and then see where we are.
It depends, is there any other questions?
So your motion is to have the two together?
They are together, by application. If you apply for a parade, you apply to the town, and on that application, it says who insures you. We're not talking about an event, we're talking about a parade. There are three different applications, remember?
I do remember.
Park use, events, and parades.
The town will not automatically cover this, is my understanding.
Well, will they not cover?
That is my understanding. The town is not interested in funding any part of this, which is why the regatta, that's what they were told, uh, Dan, maybe you could answer better than I. From my understanding, the regatta committee was told the town is only funding two parades a year, the Memorial Day Parade, and what was the other one?
Halloween.
I have an email from the supervisor last year to Debbie Roush, telling her that the town board considered the regatta a community event, and they were funding it.
Is the town, is the town gonna fund the regatta?
Happened at the meeting was, was that there was, anyway, I believe, if last year we designated that parade, the community parade, there was a discussion of whether that should still be a community parade. So we had a conversation on, uh, how much of that money was going to go to Family New Pauls, for example, which we thought would certainly qualify as a community parade. There was not a consensus that was reached at that point, although my opinion was we were leaning towards doing that. I'm in favor of that, we kind of already did it, um, but I believe we will formalize that tomorrow.
So the town is gonna pay for it now?
Mm-hmm.
We have not formally said we will, but again, I believe that will happen.
But you believe that, okay.
There, there was asked, uh, Jeff looked more into it to make sure that most donations were still happening. And I assume that if you report back that that is the case, and I believe it is, then we will.
How about a friendly amendment to Sally's proposal? If, if, if in the event the town does not approve it, then we move it to the village insurance.
Parade or what, what part?
It's one insurance policy for the day.
The parade.
Just the parade, yes.
No, the whole event, Sally, is one insurance policy.
We closed, I'm gonna go back, we closed out the regatta trust and agency account because the whole issue of parades and who was in charge got resolved by making the town the decision-maker in parade business. The parade in application requests insurance coverage. Now, if at the time, the town says, "We won't insure you," which I would doubt, since they did it last year, then I would think Theresa could come back to us and say, "The town approves this, but they won't insure us." And then we could deal with it then. But right now, the regatta funds were closed, they were sent back to the chair of the regatta committee. The regatta committee chair at that time was not the current chair. She returned the check and said she didn't want the money. Now there is a new regatta chair.
That we understand.
Who would like that money to be able to continue, okay? But the reason it was closed out was because of the whole new process of doing parades.
Uh, any other discussion on Sally's motion?
Nope.
All right, so voting, well, you all know how to, how to vote.
Yeah, so it...
All in favor?
Aye.
Nay?
Aye.
All right.
So if the town turns it down tomorrow night, then it gets, Theresa Paul is gonna request to us again, then it goes on our next...
I like that, Aye. I'll buy that. Are we taking a break now?
I believe we are, yeah, five-minute recess. The game here?
We're on resolution...
Number, well, the first resolution.
Yeah.
Well, not the one establishing, we'll go right in order now.
Okay.
So the first resolution we should have at the table, uh, Katie says it was here.
I gave Katie Ma a copy.
Okay, I don't seem to have a copy, but we have the resolution, um, establishing, or I'm sorry, passing the local law regarding rental housing. So I'll move that we adopt a local law.
Second.
Um, and now...
That's, this is the amended version that our attorney then sent us, okay.
So you have the second public hearing on?
Okay.
Okay, so West?
Aye.
Brodslar?
Aye.
Rocco?
Ra, aye.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Basco?
Aye.
I'll move we pass the resolution regarding removal of PCB's of the Hudson River.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Abstain.
Abstain, okay.
Fran, do you want to, any of these resolutions?
Sure, you could, I just copy some...
That's just the generic one, but, you know, we'll be filling in the village of and all that. Um, Katie, you have?
I can email Fran in the morning.
Okay, thank you. All right, so number four?
Okay, if I understood correctly, we are, you would like me to create the code for removing the meter in front of liquid, but not in front of rock, the pasta.
I think that's second.
Any other discussion?
Do you wanna have a motion?
I'll move that we, uh, authorize trustee Rhodes to draft the local law removing the parking space in, in front of liquid on Main Street, at the intersection of Main and Church.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, five we've done. Six, we have some good news for those who haven't gotten it yet. Sally, you made the poster, do you wanna take?
I did. I have, I like to share good news, because so many things are such lengthy discussions. And we all know, um, fiscal stress information from the Comptroller of New York State has been in the news. And basically, the comptroller evaluates all local governments, that would be towns, cities, small cities, school districts, villages in New York State annually to see how you're doing with your finances. And this is an overall picture, it includes fund balances, general funds, all of those things. And he makes a determination from zero to a hundred percent how you're doing. Zero, which no one is, is the very best, and a hundred percent is you're in big trouble.
The conceivable or inconceivable worst.
Right. And from about forty, well, you can see right here. If you are anywhere from about forty-five percent in this rating chart, up to a hundred percent, you're in different categories of fiscal stress. We have received our, the Village of New Pauls' fiscal stress for the year two thousand fourteen. And while most villages are, as you can see, all villages, the average is fourteen percent. And in mid-Hudson, it's eighteen percent, and that's all considered very good. But guess what? The Village of New Pauls is five percent, which says we are doing a fabulous job. Not only does it mean that our treasurer and per department are doing a very good job with our bills, but it also means that the board, all of you and me too, are doing a very good job following good financial practices. So congratulations.
Uh, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
And to me, I need a look at. It, so people say, "So what, the comptroller does this, what does it mean?" When you are down here, that means you borrow. If we have to go out and borrow money, we are probably going to get it at the best interest rate available. If we had to go out and float bonds, it would mean that our bonds are very sellable, and it would be at a very low interest rate.
And we've seen that already. The last borrower they did was at a point four-six percent interest rate.
And then we got a point seven-five recently too.
Yeah.
So I just think this kind of news is fabulous, and I'm very proud of us. And please, viewers who live in the village, understand we are watching your money carefully.
Thank you, Alan, thank you, thank you, Bran. All right, so that's it for number six, we just wanted to announce that publicly. And, uh, and it's special congratulations to our treasurer, Nancy Branko, who has just done a fantastic job over the years.
And may we place a letter of commendation in her file and in all of our, from the mayor.
Department heads, one of the department heads?
No, no, in her department.
Only the treasurer and her assistant, her deputy treasurer, and our payroll clerk, because that is who has done this fabulous job. And I just think it's terrific.
I'm writing that note as we speak. All right, number seven. Um, with regrets, you know, from good news to bad news, with regrets, uh, I will move that we accept the resignation of our musical planner, Brennan White.
And I will second it with double the regrets.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
With triple regrets.
All right. Number eight.
We had talked, and we had agreed, and we have from, um, our attorney, the wording for the code change to create, and to create a handicap parking space on Mill Rock and to delete the one on Church Street at fifty-seven Church Street. I would like to ask us to set a hearing. Uh, can we have a hearing on the eleventh?
Absolutely, no, we don't have...
I will move that we set a hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so number nine, there's a, a request to appeal the determination made by the building department.
I will move to deny.
Let's see, what do we have, where are we, nine? Ah, yes, I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
To deny.
To deny.
Okay, aye.
Aye. Number ten, another request for a waiver, this time for parking or towing expenses.
I will move to deny. I think.
Yeah, I think the fact that we have signs posted at every entrance to the village, um.
This is the person who, uh, was away for several days and.
And it snowed while they were gone, you know.
And are.
Sad, but.
All right.
Second.
Any discussion, Rebecca, you're?
Yes, one of the things that I've noticed, um, with the number of these issues that have come up, um, not only in front of our board, but, but things that I've seen in public, there seems to be, um, a discrepancy in consistency in the rates. I've seen people who have been charged two-seventy in this particular instance.
For towing?
Yes, for towing. In this instance, it was two-fifty, and neither are in compliance with, um, the town law. It's not our law for towing, it's under the jurisdiction of the town. Um, and I know we've started that conversation with the town board, and I'd like to see it, um, as a future agenda item, just so that, um, they can, you know, do what they need to do to make sure.
I'll second that.
The proper rates are.
I'd like to, uh, understand it, whether, um, is this a matter of legislation? Or is it not permissive that, uh, when private enterprises are engaged to perform services, that they have to cover their own expenses? And we don't know that private enterprises all have the same expenses when they're operating in the field.
It's, it's legislated by the town, it is on the books. And anyone who's authorized to tow within the town of New Pauls, which includes the village, has to abide by that law.
It's, and actually just resolutions, it's not even law. They do it at the reorg meeting. So I, I've heard, I think I copied all of you, I wrote to the town board, asked them to reconsider.
Yes. Would it be, do you think the requester that we deny understands that she should be appealing this to the town?
Um, well, interestingly enough, what we should be doing is referring her to the town, also because her letter does.
Talk about the town.
Yeah, addresses the town, not the village.
I did notice that, yes.
Katie, if we're being so kind as to, um, I'm going to move to withdraw our denial because of what.
It's addressing the, the public board.
It really needs to be addressed by the town. And would you be so kind as to refer, send her an email or call or whatever to tell her the village board has no.
Jurisdiction.
Jurisdiction on this.
Yes, and I will happily send a copy of the correspondence to Rosanna.
Rebecca, one second. That we're gonna, with, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Good, thank you.
Did you want to make a, a motion to have a future agenda item as a discussion?
Yes, I, I, I second you.
But you seconded it in the middle of a different motion, so that's why I need to. There was already a motion on the table without a vote before we.
So just, I'm sorry.
I'd like to make a new motion to have this topic of towing, please, be, um, put on at the next joint village and town board meeting.
And I second you.
That tomorrow.
No. Uh, a future.
A future.
Um, so there's a second to that, Katie?
I know, there's a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Does that tie that up?
Yes.
Yes.
And now I'll move we go into executive session, discuss personnel matters.
Second.
And I.
As well as potential litigation.
Litigation number one of two thousand thirteen.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Bren, would you join us?
Wait, 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 you're on and reporting, right? Okay, I move to authorize the deputy mayor to sign the stipulation of settlement of litigation number one of two thousand thirteen, and to approve the payment sum of twelve thousand, three forty-five and eighty-two cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you wanna do any of the other stuff, or wait? We only have two things.
Yeah.
I move to award the UV bid to, what's the name of the?
Ideal.
Yeah.
Do you have it in front of you?
Do you have it there? I have it there, I think. For eight hundred and fifty dollars.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What was the?
What was the other?
There was one more thing we had to do. What was it?
Um, the, the letter to the proprietors?
Hmm?
Letter to the proprietors.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the letter to the property owners, um, regarding sewage hookup, um, pending receipt of the estimates from our Department of Public Works.
No, the list of independent contractors.
List of independent contractors.
Contractors.
Yeah.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
Yeah.
Was that the way we were gonna do with Jason? We approved the letter pending the list of contractors. Okay, move to adjourn.
Did you, did you do the UV?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Good job.